This conference will now be recorded.
By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshogun Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Ms. Checo, if you could do roll call, please.
Councilmember Totino.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin.
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan.
Here.
Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Stokely.
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski.
Here.
President Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Aronson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session. At this time, please mute your audio lines. No public comment will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comments section located on your agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit written comments via email to brogers@conshogunpa.gov. A member of the Borough Administration will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. Thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. Prior to our work session, council held an executive session on legal matters. The first item on the agenda under Council Business is to conduct an interview for the vacancy board. The interviewer is for Holly Hoist for the position of vacancy board. Good evening, Holly.
Good evening.
Thank you for applying for the position. Does anyone on council have a question for Holly?
I do. Hi, Holly. Could you please tell us about your current involvement with the community?
Sure. Currently, I'm on the Friends of Conshogun Parks Committee. We're the fundraising group for the parks in Conshogun. I'm also on the board at Conshogun Elementary's PTO. Been very involved in the PTO in the first two years that my daughter's been there. Let's see. I'm an active member of my church, St. Mark's Lutheran Church, and I enjoy participating in community events and volunteering in many other ways.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. So Holly, for this position, I know it's a position that is very important to the borough, even though it is really used very little. But what do you think the important role of this position is? And what would you give back on that?
I think the most important thing is that decisions that are being made by council are not held up in the situation of a tie or vacancy on the council. We need to continue to move the community forward. I love this community, and I want to see it continue to move forward. And decision-making is something that I take my time doing by nature. My background is in history. I was a ranger with the National Park Service for more than a decade, and I like doing my research on topics. I value hearing multiple sides on an issue. And at the end of the day, what serves the community best is in the best interest for everyone, for longevity value. And that's what I would hope to bring to the vacancy board.
Thank you, Holly. Anyone else on council have a question for Holly?
Yeah, Bob Stokely. Holly, you understand this is a nonpartisan position.
I do understand. And as I said, I like to hear multiple sides on an issue, do my research, consider what's best for the entire community in decision-making, and I would not let partisanship get in the way.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else on council have a question for Holly? Not a lot of questions tonight, Holly, so I appreciate your joining us and interviewing for the position. I know myself, I truly appreciate replying for this position because it's one that has been empty for a bit and, you know, we'll look forward to talking to you again. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Okay. The next item on the agenda is under Land Use Matters, Public Hearings and Ordinances. And the first item is consider granting conditional use approval for 261-263 East Elm Street. Mr. Peters, if you would be so kind to present that?
Thank you very much, President Leonard. Ed, I see you there. Can we please go on the record? This is the scheduled date and time for the continued hearing on the application of Craft Custom Homes LLC for the property located at 261 and 263 East Elm Street. The applicant, Craft Custom Homes, seeks conditional use approval from zoning ordinance Section 27-1901-B and Section 27-1903-B.11 to permit a modern multifamily housing development in the limited industrial district pursuant to the residential overlay district provisions and to permit a building height of greater than 35 feet. This matter was before you for a hearing on May 5th. It is now before you this evening for a vote. Just to remind you what occurred at that hearing, the specific height relief being requested by the applicant is to permit a building height of 45 feet on the East Elm Street side of the building, and that's to permit the scissor lifts that we talked through during that May 5th hearing at some length. As with all applications such as this, Borough Administration has worked through some proposed conditions that I will present to Borough Council in a moment. For purposes of the record, there is one additional document that I will mark as Exhibit B7. Exhibit B7 is a list of names, addresses, and whether or not the individuals are in favor or against the project, this specific project. There are several pages, nine pages to be exact, and within those nine pages, there are, I think it's fair to say, the majority in favor, but there are at least two individuals that noted their opposition on the petition. Again, Borough Administration and I worked through if Borough Council was inclined to approve the conditional uses, we've worked through some proposed conditions. So the first would be that the applicant shall obtain the approval of the Borough Engineer for the traffic flow in and out of the property. The applicant shall perform a traffic analysis within six months of 75% occupancy. That traffic analysis shall be based on actual traffic counts generated by the project and on the actual traffic on surrounding roadways. Applicants shall submit such information as part of that analysis as required by the Borough's traffic engineer to confirm the appropriate traffic flow in and out of and through the project. As part of the condition, the applicant shall not be required to make structural changes to the project. The applicant shall post financial security in the amount of $7,500 as part of its overall financial security for the project's public improvements, add security for the cost of the traffic analysis and potential modifications, for example, to the traffic flow in, out, and through the project. Any modifications and improvements necessitated by the traffic analysis shall be completed before final release of the financial security for the project. Applicants shall provide plantings, planters, or other landscaping elements around the perimeter of the project to the satisfaction of the borough. Applicants shall provide lighting to the satisfaction of the borough, pedestrian visibility around the perimeter of the project. Applicants shall obtain the approval of the Borough Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Coordinator for the proposed emergency ingress and egress to, from, and throughout the site. The approval shall specifically include the ingress and egress to and through the proposed grass landscaped courtyard. Construction of the project shall substantially comply with the representations made by the applicant in its application and at the hearing, including with the materials submitted with applicant's application and the testimony and exhibits introduced at the hearing. Substantial compliance shall include substantial compliance with the architectural renderings accepted into evidence as Exhibit A6. Applicants shall pre-wire the parking spaces for the project to accommodate the installation of electric car charging stations. Applicants shall pre-wire and otherwise design the parking area for the project to accommodate scissor parking lifts underneath the building. And the applicant shall obtain and shall comply with all conditions of relief associated with its pending zoning hearing board application. Those are the nine conditions that Borough Administration is recommending should Borough Council be inclined to grant the approval. Again, there are two conditional uses before you this evening. You can vote on them at the same time if you would like, or you can take them separately. If you do take them separately, you should make sure that your motion includes the nine conditions. So if you wanted to take them together, it would be a motion to approve conditional use approval pursuant to Section 1901, 27-1901-B, and Section 27-1903-B.11 to permit a modern multifamily housing development with a height along the East Elm Street side of 45 feet, subject to the nine conditions I just read off.
Okay. Do I have a motion from council on that? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed?
Mike, I have one question for you. Is it normal to get signatures outside of an area when people don't live here?
I'm not sure I'm following the question. What?
Well, I'm looking at the signatures, and some of them, there's a couple of people that don't even live here. Is that, not that it's going to change anything, I'm just curious.
So Anita, when they did it for the Wawa, there was a lot of signatures that weren't from Conshogun residents.
But I think they own property down there.
Yeah, so that's the question.
Yes, they do.
So clear, to be clear, because it is a good question. The document that was submitted, the Exhibit B7, should be on its face. So if you're on the belief that there are individuals out here that do not reside in the borough, you're certainly able to make that assumption. But again, whether or not that changes your vote is a different matter, but.
Yeah, that's why I changed my vote. I'm just curious because I'm seeing West 10th, I'm sitting eight, these people don't even live on that side of the borough.
But they own, some of them own property down there.
Right.
There's a whole lot that own properties then.
And they're residents.
And it's not abnormal to see signatures from elsewhere within the municipality, no. I mean, yeah, to the extent that the purpose of this project is in theory to provide a range of housing options, right? That's not necessarily surprising to me, although if you wanted to give greater weight to those that actually live around it, you're certainly entitled to do that.
No, I was just curious. Thank you.
I got, I got one question. Why are we voting on this tonight? How come we're not voting on the voting meeting?
Good question, Bob. Because you're running up against a time period, so you need to vote on it tonight to make sure you're within the relevant time period. That's a good question.
Right, Bob. And if you remember, we, the client asked to table it last meeting because we didn't have full counsel for the vote.
Right.
So, okay?
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Which carries.
All right. For purposes of the record, I will issue tomorrow a notice of decision, and then there will be a written decision issued shortly thereafter. So thank you very much to our court reporter and to the applicant. Ed, you're free to go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. The next item on the agenda is discussion on adopting a nuisance ordinance relative to animal control. And I believe Steph and Mr. Peters are going to present this for us.
Yeah, so I'll kick it off, and then Mike can jump in. Recently, the borough has received numerous complaints regarding feral cats in certain sections of the borough. We did discuss this topic back in 2018. We are revisiting it specifically as it relates to our health and safety ordinance regulating feral cats. So residents have health and safety concerns regarding neighbors feeding stray cats. They've requested that Borough Council consider an ordinance that would ban feeding stray animals. We've received three documented complaints from residents in April of 2021. We have numerous residents who sent in support of revisions ordinance, which we have on file. We have some that have submitted public comment for this evening, so we will read those when we get to the public comment section. The issues of concerns that they've laid out include increased litters, rotting food, increase in rodents, cat feces, dogs getting sick from eating the cat feces, which results in medical bills, and unvaccinated cats posing health risks to humans. The specific requests from those residents are to pass an ordinance that bans feeding stray animals and to force the stray cats to be trapped and sent for adoption. So again, those are just highlights of the complaints and concerns that we have on file with the borough. To date, we've not made any movement on the topic. When we discussed it previously, there was mixed sentiment in terms of, you know, how we move forward formally. Similar ordinances are in place in neighboring municipalities. Those ordinances require an animal control officer. They also refer to them as animal wardens. We would need to institute this position in order to introduce this type of ordinance and regulation of pets and animals in the borough. It doesn't currently exist. The average hourly rate of an animal control officer is about $20 an hour in our area. It's not currently a budgeted item, nor has it been pursued as a budget conversation to date. We do have our budget cycle starting from an administrative perspective. Budget meeting will be in September, so this is something we have to keep in mind as we, I have it on my list for budget conversations as well. An alternative option to the actual animal control officer, animal warden position would be to hire a company as an independent contractor to fulfill the animal control officer position is an alternative option. Tonight, what I'm really looking for is whether there's a majority of council that would like to authorize administration to further look into revisions of Chapter 10 Health and Safety regulating feral cats. I think at this point that it would be worth considering based off of the feedback that we've received. I know that there are certain council members that this issue is a greater concern, but across the board, as our community gets more diversified and more animal friendly, I think it's definitely something that we should probably look at. And then just something else to keep in mind is that animal control ordinances like Lower Marion, which is the one that was provided in your upload for your preparation for this evening, it also provides a mechanism by which citizens can commence a civil action against anyone except for the borough, state, and country to enforce the provisions of the ordinance, which requires control of dogs and cats. So currently, and I think this is, it's kind of evident in the concerns that we've received to date, that the residents really have no means by which to take action against the neighbor who's allowing their own cats, stray cats, to run and defecate on their property. Something like Lower Marion, which we use as an example, would give them, would put them in a situation where maybe it turns hostile, since there's really no formal mechanism that exists, and kind of give them a method by which to move forward, to help prohibit the feeding of stray cats, which then leads to the defecation on private property, which is an issue. From a fiscal consideration, you know, there is the cost of the animal control officer and/or the independent consultant, but again, that can be a conversation that's added into the overall budget discussion. But really, for this evening, what I need to know before we do a deep dive into this and move any further down the road is if there's a majority of council that feels right now that there is a need for an animal control ordinance as it pertains to feral cats and dogs. And again, we'll work through the particulars administratively and bring it back in front of you, but we won't do that unless there is a consensus. So I will, I will stop introducing the topic and turn it over to see if there's any conversation on the topic.
I definitely think there's a huge conversation on this part. We've had, I've had multiple calls from a woman who has a cat that keeps coming into her yard and has annihilated what is in their yard, which is not right. She's even talked to the resident, and nothing seems to help. We've also had 32 cats born in our neighborhood, which are mostly gone now, but we need to take control of this, and it's the same with the dogs. People, I saw a dog today in Marywood Park, off the leash. We had another dog attack on Sunday that was horrific. I mean, people need to know they have to control their animals if they want to have them. I mean, it's their responsibility.
Steph, I'm in agreement as well. I know that in this particular part in the first ward, there are many stray cats. A lot of residents have been doing the best that they can to do the, to catch and get them faked and neutered. And then there are a couple of homes that there isn't, there aren't current residents, and cats have been going into the basement. So I think you'd hear multiple different reasons, and so I am in full support. It's definitely necessary. Thank you.
I agree also. I think it's a reoccurring problem in our neighborhoods, and it's unfair to the residents that have pets and are responsible. So I would like to see us investigate it more.
Right. Now, I think that, you know, one of the main concerns on it is, you know, how the best way to move forward in enforcing it. So I would like to see that research as we go forward on it.
I will say from the mayor end, this is one of the more common concerns that I get from residents. Just before COVID, residents along Maple, right by Guppies on the 0 and 100 blocks, hired a company to come out and over a two-day period trapped 36 cats. So it is definitely something that I hear a lot about. So in my role as advisor to council, you know, I share your sentiment that we should put something in place to help our residents.
Yeah, along Spring Mill Avenue, we also are having some issues, and I just feel that, you know, the onus right now is on the resident to try and work through it, and there's no options for them at this point. And some of the residents are putting a lot of out-of-pocket money because of the downstream effects of these feral animals, and then their animals are getting sick. So I definitely think that we need to look at how to help put in place processes that will give the residents some control over their own properties and their own animals. So I totally am on board with moving forward. Is there anything in particular that you've heard from your residents that should be, that we should be looking to include as we go through more kind of an investigation process into what the ordinance will look like? Just any highlights that you want us to be mindful of? Again, if there's anything that comes up after this evening, now that we do have a majority of council indicated as moving forward, you could just send them our way. I'm just curious if there's anything this evening that you'd like to discuss. If not, I'll just take marching orders. I think from my perspective is, you know, all well and good, but we need to have an enforcement piece of this, and we need to be consistent and follow up with that and be mindful that, you know, we understand that some people think that they're doing good by feeding and propagating this, but when it is causing harm, we just need to have an enforcement. Part, portion.
Agreed with the enforcement, and I think this is one thing that we should not, I don't want to use the word, but dump on our police. I think they have enough to do, and I think having an enforcer in place will kind of relieve that from them and getting calls about somebody's cat being in my yard.
Okay, and you're comfortable with either option? So if we're looking at it from a financial perspective and we're either doing an in-house animal control officer or an independent contractor, you're comfortable with us looking at both options?
Yeah, to see which one's going to be the better fit.
Well, if you're doing in-house.
Right.
What's he going to do?
Right.
Is that a full-time job, looking for stray cats?
No, it would not be a full-time job, no.
So what else would he do? I mean, I would.
Well, we can talk about that as we go through the budget process, but as it stands right now, it wouldn't be a full-time position unless there's a new FTE position created that has alternative responsibilities in addition to being an animal control officer. But again, that's more of a budget conversation because that FTE equates to costs that are not solely associated with animal control. That has implications for the overall operating budget and our personnel percentage of that budget. So again, we'll look at the different options. I'll price them out. But that's, again, it's not going to be an overnight decision because you're going to have to see how all the numbers and regulations fall in the overall picture of the borough operation.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Does anyone else have any more comments or questions?
So this wouldn't be just for the cats, it would also be for the dogs.
That is correct, yeah. We're going to, we're going to do it. We're going to do one overarching, comprehensive ordinance as it relates to animal control in general.
Okay.
Your ordinance is a little out of date, so we'll bring it up.
A little?
Steph, can you confirm that it would include roosters as well?
Yeah. I.
Mayor, that is an excellent point.
Well, I will include the roosters.
Okay. I did get a call about that today.
Oh, forever. It keeps his females happy.
Oh. Okay. Not so much on that.
Does anyone else have any questions or concerns on moving forward?
No.
With the nuisance ordinance? Okay.
Okay. I got it. Thank you very much for your input. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steph. The next item on the agenda under presentations is the MS4 presentation, which will be presented by Karen McNair, Borough Engineer. Karen?
Thank you, President Leonard. Brittany, would you be able to put up? Oh, great, thank you. So I prepared this slide for you to just have up while I do an overview of your MS4 permit, and just as an idea, municipal separate storm service system is what MS4 stands for. So the DEP, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, is actually who issues the permit to the borough. What it does, it authorizes the borough to discharge stormwater, surface water. So in the borough, that would be the Plymouth Creek and the Scoopel River. And the DEP considers storm service system to include not only pipes, swales, and inlets like you would traditionally think, but roads actually too, because the curb line will convey stormwater down to your inlet and into the pipes. The permit requires reduction of discharge of pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. And pollutants for this permit are things like sediment and phosphorus and nitrogen. The permit also asks for the borough to remove any hazardous connections, so that would be any connections of a sanitary sewer or something like your washing machine, because that would put detergents into your storm water. The way this is. The way this can be accomplished is by implementing the six minimum control measures that are shown on the slide there. So that would be public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site stormwater runoff control, post-construction runoff control, and pollution prevention slash good housekeeping. And then we help the borough prepare annual reports that get submitted to. All right, I'll try that again. Uh, we help the borough prepare annual reports that get submitted to the DEP that shows how the borough are meeting these requirements. The borough also has a ten percent sediment reduction requirement for the Plymouth Creek watershed, and that watershed roughly covers the western portion of the borough. Uh, the borough has to meet that requirement by the end of February of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we prepared a plan that was approved by council in twenty eighteen and then approved by TEP in twenty twenty, showing how that could be met. Uh, that plan that was presented and approved was to construct an underground basin in Suck Cliff Park, and that would be on the, the eastern side of the park by, uh, Wood Street and West Ninth Avenue. Some ways the borough actively addresses these permit requirements is, uh, having me on your agenda tonight to give this presentation, um, having a stormwater page on the borough website, um, having stormwater education articles in your newsletters, um, public involvement in activities. Uh, for an example, the EAC recently had, uh, the trash cleanup, and that is a activity that counts towards this permit because by collecting that trash, now it's not getting into your storm service system and into the river. So that's a great activity, um, and a way to involve the public. And Gilmore and Associates, as your borough engineer, helps, um, sample stormwater flows that is coming out of pipes and also monitoring construction activities for sediment. Uh, so that's the summary I had for you tonight on the permit. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Karen.
I have a general question, um, because the Plymouth Creek obviously runs through Plymouth Township. Should we be concerned about what's happening further up the line where Chemical Road is now closed because of sinkholes? Have you looked into that situation, if it would affect Concha Hocken Borough?
So sinkholes is a separate, um, issue. Are you asking if you, you should be worried about sinkholes or worried about what's getting in your stormwater from the sinkholes?
Well, I, actually both, because we are part of the same water system, and water systems don't respect township lines. So whatever's going on adjacent to us in Plymouth is a concern for us. So if you just could, you know, tell us a little bit about that.
Sure, um, I'm not involved in Plymouth Township, so I can't really answer to what they are doing. But, you know, in situations where we would be involved, you know, the idea would be to, um, try and trace back where the sinkhole started and limit any pollution or sediment, anything that's getting into the storm sewer. Um, a lot of it goes into the groundwater because it's a hole in the ground, so it really pulls it into the groundwater instead of necessarily putting it into the stream. Um, and as far as sinkholes go, you know, the, the borough does not have a history of sinkholes like the one on Chemical Road. You might have small ones that are caused by, um, you know, water getting pulled into an inlet because there's a hole in a pipe or, you know, if there's a water leak and it, the water sat somewhere. But you, your soils are a little bit different than what are in Plymouth Township, and I think that's part of the reason you haven't had issues to date. And the borough was developed a little bit earlier than Plymouth Township as well, so that, um, if you were going to have issues, you, you probably would have had, you would have been fighting them already.
Right, and I'm sure much of theirs is due to the limestone in the area.
Yep, exactly, exactly. And the borough has a little bit different soil, so yeah, you don't have those same problems.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on council have any questions for Karen or concerns? Well, thank you, Karen. I think that we're good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. So the next item on the agenda is Managers Matters, and I will turn that over to Ms. Checo.
Thank you, President Leonard. Uh, the first item is considering an extension of the temporary parking regulation within the borough. So as you're all aware, um, the local disaster emergency, um, persists in the borough, Concha Hocken as it relates to COVID nineteen. Um, in support of our restaurants with takeout and outdoor dining options, we, we put, established a no parking area on the east side of Fayette Street between East First Avenue and East Second Avenue. Um, those parking regulations are set to expire in June. We're asking tonight that Borough Council consider extending that temporary no parking area for a period of ninety days. Um, Bob Stokely, specifically at the Parking Task Form, Task Force Meeting, um, emphasized the importance of this temporary no parking structure, um, that we have set up currently. And from the Parking Task Force perspective, uh, we're going to evaluate the next ninety days. If you're so inclined to approve that, bring it back to the Parking Task Force at their next meeting to determine if it's something the Task Force wants to look at from a more permanent perspective. Um, but for this, for this evening, um, we're just looking to extend the temporary no parking for a period of an additional ninety days. Um, and then Bob will bring it back to the Parking Task Force, and we'll make for future determinations on how that looks long-term. So the motion is to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one ten, which approves an extension of the temporary parking regulations within the borough.
I'll make that motion, Barton.
I'll second it, Bob Stokely.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, one thirty West Fifth Avenue, um, their financial security escrow release, their second and final is ready. Um, this has been reviewed by Karen McNair. Um, a site inspection was completed, and the attached escrow release recommendation was submitted for council's consideration in your meeting upload. Um, it is contingent upon the borough's receipt of an eighteen-month maintenance security. Um, but for this evening, uh, that on your, in front of you for consideration is to approve second and final security escrow release for one thirty West Fifth Avenue in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Griffin.
And a second?
Barton?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, unfortunately, Georgina Weber from the Dog Park Advisory Committee has indicated to the borough that she needs to resign her position. Um, if accepted by council this evening, administration will advertise the vacancy for a term ending on December in twenty twenty-three. Um, the motion is to accept the resignation of Georgina Weber, if you're so inclined.
I'll make that motion to Tino.
I'll second Flanagan.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next item is a, um, is to, is to discuss the Sora West parking garage signage that extends into the right-of-way. Um, in April of twenty twenty-one, the Sora West project submitted a building permit application for ground-level signage. That permit was denied. Um, our zoning officer denied that permit based on non-compliance with, uh, some item, some aspects of the borough zoning code. One such item was that the zoning code states that no signs other than official street signs shall be erected or maintained within the ultimate street right-of-way unless approved by council. Uh, some of the proposed signs were located within the ultimate right-of-way of the abutting streets. In response to the denied permit, Keystone Property Group have, they have revised their signage package. They complied with the zoning officer's concerns and requests for the code. However, the signage package still does include proposed blade sign on the parking garage, which will extend into the right-of-way, even though it's up in the air. Um, so therefore, ultimately, it does require approval by Borough Council. Um, given that the garage consists of a hundred and fifty public parking spaces and then also opens up to the public in the evening for more parking spaces, administration feels that the signs on the parking garage should definitely be approved, regardless of the fact that they extend into the right-of-way. I think specifically with the Parking Task Force, again, what we've been talking about is, um, needing additional marketing and signage and directional signage specifically, which illustrates kind of all of the public parking that exists now that this council and our mayor have done specifically and deliberately in conjunction with our corporate partners. So I think this signage in particular is definitely worth consideration, um, regardless of whether it extends into the right-of-way. Um, so is there any questions from council or concerns on the administrative recommendation to approve this signage?
Stephanie, I have one question. When you said this signage is up in the air, like, how high is it off of the roadway? Would you have an idea? It's like well up in the air?
No, I don't believe it's, 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 um, my understanding, Jane, and I don't, I don't have a plan in front of me specifically to give you the exact location, but it is, again, my understanding is that it is, um, close to the entrance and exit, so it's directing them into the exit of the garage. So it's more towards the ground level. When I meant up in the air, I just, it's not, it's not in the ground. It's on.
It's not a sign in the ground. Okay, all right, thank you. That was all. I was just curious. I would make that motion if no one else has any objections or comments.
As long as it doesn't impede their vision, I'm good with it.
Okay, Steph, is that something you would like a motion on this evening?
Uh, if council's inclined to make a motion, we can, we can definitely move forward with that. Um, that is up to council, that's the council's prerogative.
Does council have any more questions or concerns? Okay, so we have a motion from Ms. Flanagan and a second from Ms. Barton.
Did I recuse myself? Bob Stokely.
Okay, and a recusal from Mr. Stokely. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steph. One more.
Okay, thank you. Um, the last item is a discussion on the Hometown Heroes program, and I will apologize that this was on the agenda in May. I unfortunately could not make the mid-work session, so it was tabled until June. So again, I apologize that it was pushed back, the discussion was pushed back a month. Um, Concha Hocken was contacted by the Hometown Heroes Banner Program and the VFW. Both entities would like to bring the banner program to Concha Hocken on Fayette Street. The banner program is a living tribute to recognize and honor veterans who are serving or who would have served in the armed forces. The program is organized and managed by the Hometown Heroes Program, which right now is located in Lansdale, Pennsylvania. Montgomery County's Office of Veteran Affairs also supports the program as they believe the program increases overall visibility for veteran issues. Individuals interested in participating in the program need to complete an application and process the application and payment through the Heroes Program. In other words, the borough does not process applications or payment. The program asks each participating municipality to hang the banners from Memorial Day through Veterans Day annually for a two- or three-year cycle. So what we would be looking at, um, in this discussion, and again, this will be on a future, future agenda for consideration and a vote, um, really would be a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three cycle. The borough, um, the banners are delivered to the borough. The borough stores and hangs the, the banners themselves. The banners require specific brackets, which do cost approximately fifty-five dollars each. Um, if you're looking to see the banner program actually, um, on location somewhere, Lansdale Borough is a model program. Um, if you're interested in looking into it further as we continue to discuss the topic. Um, from an administrative perspective, just some things to keep in mind as we work through it. Um, again, uh, specific brackets would just need to be purchased, so there's costs associated with that. Uh, we would need to check with the utility companies for permission to hang on telephone poles, if applicable, since they're not our property. Um, just keep in mind that each time we hang banners or Christmas decorations, um, it does cost money. We utilize our electrician's bucket truck to hang Christmas decorations and Fun Fest banners on Fayette Street. And then the last item to just keep in mind as we work through this is scheduling. Uh, so the Hometown Heroes Program requests the banners be hung from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. Um, we do hang Fun Fest banners on Fayette Street from August through September. Therefore, we would just have to work through some logistical issues with hanging Hometown Hero banners, needing to take those banners down, put Fun Fest banners up, take Fun Fest banners down, put the Hometown Heroes banners up, and then take them down for our Christmas decorations. So just a lot of taking down and putting back up. But, um, again, uh, you know, I, we, we did, in your meeting materials, we, we, um, included a letter from the county, specifically the Office of Veteran Affairs. Um, I, I look at other municipalities, which we did look into. Um, it is a way to honor your, literally, your hometown heroes. Um, and I think that, um, it's a discussion that's, that we should have and, and determine if this is, you know, a direction that the borough wants to go in for a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three cycle. So I will, um, that is my introduction of the topic. Um, if there's any discussion, um, I will take notes, and we will go from there.
Steph, since we have streetlights on Hector Street and in other areas, do we have to keep it at, to only Fayette Street?
I don't, so when we had the conversation with the VFW and the Hometown Heroes, the answer was no, that it didn't have to be isolated simply to Fayette Street. Um, that was the original ask. Um, but I think that the point of tonight's discussion is if, if, if we think that there's a better location, that is something we'll take back to Hometown Heroes and the VFW, but I don't, don't have an issue with that.
I'm not, I'm not thinking better, I'm thinking additional if, if needed.
Right.
Um, and Hector Street is a state road as well. And traffic.
And it's. Right, it's very visible.
And you wouldn't have the problem of putting them up and taking them down for Fun Fest banner?
Yeah, it's additional places to hang things where we might have, where we could spread out a little bit more throughout the borough as well.
What about Spring Mill down near the VFW?
Well, I don't, yeah. Not quite as visible, but it's a good area.
Uh, Steph, when, when we had our, uh, meeting with the VFW and Hometown Heroes, um, Walt had mentioned setting up a temporary test around the VFW. Is that something that's still doable?
That is, uh, that is a conversation that can be had with council. They would like to be a temporary, so they can determine what it would look like. Um, that is definitely something we can do.
Yeah, by the way, this is Walt Hartnett, um, with Commander of the VFW. I know most of you, um, I mean, I, I'm on because of this, and specifically, we, we offered that. We would, we would fund the brackets, um, and we could put three around our monument right here at Fifth and, and Wells. Um, this is a pilot program, um, to kind of see, gauge the interest from the, the citizens, um, and kind of take it from there. But we would be encouraged, and we would, we, we would fund the whole thing. I mean, obviously, we would need the help from the, uh, the borough employees to get them up. Um, but we could do it as soon as the Fourth of July. I mean, I, I've been in contact with the women from Hometown Heroes. I know they go from May to, to November, but if we wanted to do it mid-cycle, um, Bridgeport, just put them up in Bridgeport, so you can drive. You don't have to go to Lansdale. Bridgeport just put, I think, seven banners up, um, over Memorial Day. Um, so there, there, there's a good example right there of what, what they're doing. Um, but we are, we at the VFW are fully ready to take on the financial obligation of buying the brackets and putting them together, um, and even giving the names of who, who, who can go up first as the, to test the beta for it, to see what we can do, you know, moving forward to next year.
Well, that's a question that I have had for a couple of years, is how, how do you identify who the hometown heroes are from, you know, years ago to current? Is it through, um, some, some roster that you have at the VFW? Or do the private citizens have to request that their ancestor get put on it?
Yeah, so the, the program runs through, whoever puts an application in, and then they determine how many, how many slots we have here in Concha Hocken. Um, for this test, for this, the, the, you know, the beta of us to go through this, if we had three, we would probably do, I would probably start with, you know, if we were going to be funding it through the VFW, we would do the first commander, whoever served, uh, Phil Coyne. Uh, Mr. Coyne was the, was the first commander here of the post. Uh, Mr. Coyne was the, was the first commander here of the post. We would do a current post member that I would almost do as like a lottery, or anybody interested as a current post member, we would put in a lottery and pull the name out to do it. And the third would be somebody who's a relative of one of our auxiliary members. Um, because our VFW auxiliary is a lot of work here, so we would do it as one of their family members. So that would just be to start with. As we get more black brackets up, as this grows out, and like Steph said, the organization handles all of that. When they get the applications in, um, you know, the people can make requests that, hey, I want it out here out front of my house or this corner, you know. But it's, it's a case by case basis, and we would have no, you know, it wouldn't be us to determine. It would be on that organization um, where, where it goes. And the, the cool thing at the end of it too, the banners, when they're done, they, they're usually still in good shape, especially if we do for two years. The banners can go to the families when they're done, for them to do whatever they want with at, at the end, when, when they're no longer being home, and we replace them with a new banner.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? On the banners? Okay, okay. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Walt.
Well, so I guess I just, I need clarification since the temporary test run was kind of posed. Is that something that council wants to move forward with in a specific location for this year? And then we'll continue the conversation for 2022-2023?
Yes.
I like the idea if in front of the VFW, I think that would be very shitting.
Yes. Okay, so I will work.
The board is moving forward.
Okay, so I'll work directly with Hometown Heroes and the VFW to get our, what are we calling it? Walt and the mayor, our, our, our plot plan?
Example.
Yeah, whether it's the beta, whether you call it the uh, um, yeah, yeah.
Pilot program.
All right. Pilot program.
I'm sorry. So Walt, will Hometown Heroes tell us how many places or how many that they would need? And then we would identify where to put them? Or how exactly does that work?
Yeah, so I think, like I said, if we're doing this pilot program, we would tell them it's three. We would tell them the three are. I think next year, i- if it goes up, listen, there's a lot of great places. We could put them all around Suck Cliff Park. There's a lot of good high visibility spots. It doesn't have to be just up and down Fayette Street. Um, you know, there, there, there's a lot on Cowal Lane. I, I can think, if you drive around Lansdale, you'll notice it's not just on the main streets. It's on the side streets and it's on everywhere. And then it's up for the borough, the city side. These are the locations where we're going to have brackets. And then the Hometown Heroes Programs fills those brackets up. Then they're not going to tell us how many brackets. We're going to tell them, hey, we have twelve sets of brackets up. Find us, you know, the candidate that we want to put up, put up, you know, find us the banners to put up for it.
Gotcha. Okay.
I think what I'll do, Tina, to that point is I'll get with Walt and the Hometown Heroes. And there, there seems to be unanimous support on the concept, so we'll formalize the ideas. We'll formalize this pilot program concept for 2021. We'll put the particulars together for 2022-2023. We'll bring it back in front of you, and we'll do a formal motion, but we'll move forward with both of those items. Does that sound like a plan?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, then I have my more.
All right. Thank you, Steph.
Thank you.
Go ahead. The next item on the agenda is council member and mayor matters. Um, so Mr. Mayor Aronson.
Thank you, President Leonard. Um, so we had a, a very busy weekend in the borough, as always, over Memorial Day weekends. Um, we had a big flag planting at Calvary Cemetery, which has 3,000 plus graves and a really fantastic turnout, even in the rain. Uh, so thank you to everyone that came out, and thank you to the VFW for um, taking care of all of our local cemeteries every year. Um, and then, of course, we had our ceremony on Monday, which uh, went really, really well. Um, we actually went uh, the F W to 11 cemeteries all over the Colonial School District. Um, so it was really wonderful to see the addition of a few new places in um, in White Marsh added to the, to the, to the list. Um, so it was a really great day. Thank you to everyone that came out and our emergency services for making sure we could do all this safely. And then, um, of course, the last thing is we have our big um, Arts Festival and Car Show this weekend. The, the weather, I think I can officially say, looks, looks perfect, so. Um, so I expect a great turnout. We, we have more registrations than we've ever had. Uh, so it, it should be a packed full day with a lot to do. And uh, of course, we're hoping that um, everyone comes out and supports our local businesses. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Uh, Mr. Stokely?
Yes, Colin, I do. Um, there's a land auction uh, in the borough of Suck Cliff Park. There's three parcels that we don't own in the park. And I'm just asking if there's any interest in us participating in that auction.
Bob, I can tell you from an administrative perspective that that, the owner of those parcels of land is, is scheduled to come into the borough administrative offices for a meeting on June 9th, I believe it is. Um, the, the conversation will be on those parcels of land. Should those parcels of land be something that council should be considering to a greater extent in terms of open space? Um, as it is a permissible item, an executive session as property, it'll be brought to your attention later in June or early July.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, that's it. I'm good.
It's the only, uh, it's the only property we don't own in that park. So it would be nice to purchase that for open space, like Steph said, so.
All right.
That, that's great. That's going to happen now with the meeting.
So I'll, so stay tuned. I will uh, keep you updated on the particulars after that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, Anita?
Yeah, to piggyback on that, the only problem I see with that property is how do we protect it from the kids? Because it's behind a bunch of houses, including mine, and it's very landlocked. So that, I'm glad that you're having a meeting with them, Stephanie. So, but other than that, I, I've said enough tonight.
Thank you, Anita. Jane?
I just want to congratulate the mayor and his committee for all their hard work on the car show and the art show, and say that I think this is something the community is going to welcome. As you said, that registrations are the highest ever. So I think the enthusiasm is really building, and it'll just be wonderful to see all our neighbors and support our local businesses. So thank you, Yannis.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you, Jane. Karen?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, Ike?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, Tina?
Uh, just a quick plug for Friends of Conshohocken Parks. We will have a booth at the um, Car Show, Art Festival. I think we're in front of the Borough Building. And we have several baskets um, for um, the community to um, help support and raise some funds. I think what we are looking at is potentially trying to raise funds for a um, zip line for Suck Cliff Park. So um, just to be aware that we will be out there as well for um, Saturday.
So I have a. The magnets tomorrow.
Pete, I have a question. I, I, I'm, uh, I'm going to donate $500 to that zip line. Should I, who do I make that check out to?
Friends of Conshohocken Parks. And then just indicate zip line for Suck Cliff Park on that. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Okay, Chief Metz?
I, I don't have anything to add, Colin.
Thank you, Chief Metz. Um, and I would like to uh, actually thank Lauren, um, our Recreation Director, for all her hard work for the senior barbecue today. Um, I know that it was quite a success. And um, you know, just having at least to be able to have some things with just at the end of the pandemic and having some things for the seniors is a great thing. And I know that we'll be all happy when they can, again, join in at the community center. But today was a great day for them, and thank you, Lauren, and staff for all of your hard work today. So.
Thanks, Colin. Appreciate it.
You're, you're welcome. And if no one has anything else, I will say, meeting adjourned. Oh, no, public comment. I got it. Public comment. Brittany, do we have any written?
Thank you, President Leonard. Yes, we did receive four uh, written public comments. The first comment is from Eric Salford at 350 West Elm Street. Mr. Salford writes, I moved into the Grand about two months ago, and I've noticed many stray cats, at least 10 to 15, across the street near the park. And I've also seen a nearby neighbor even take a few dishes of food to feed all of them, attracting more and more strays to come back and join. I'm in full support of an animal ordinance restricting things like this in order to control the stray cat problem in Conshohocken. The next comment was submitted by Sam Nagel, 350 West Elm Street. Mr. Nagel writes, although I am newer to Conshohocken, I have noticed the amount of stray cats in the area, and I have been quite surprised at how abundant they are. I have personally counted 10 to 20 cats at a time in a single location across the street from my building and around the Haynes and Savadi Memorial Park. Also, on two separate occasions, I have seen another local resident come out and feed the aforementioned cats, which only attract more to the area. After learning about the action that is being put forward at the community meeting to address this situation, I can say that I am fully behind this animal ordinance aiming to minimize this problem in the future. The next comment was submitted by Katie Curlin, 331 Spring Mill Avenue. Ms. Curlin writes, the National Feline Research Council states that two unsterilized cats can produce 420,000 cats in seven years. That amounts to one cat per household in the city of Philadelphia. These cats are adorable at first blush, but they cause many issues for community members, house pets, and the landscape. Take a moment to review Stephen Menn's book, Cat Wars: The Devastating Consequence of a Cuddly Killer, and understand that these feral cats are responsible for the extinction of more than 60 species. On a local level, when individuals feed these feral cats, they are inviting raccoons and skunks that carry rabies into our backyard, which is a public nightmare. Notice that cats are now the most common domestic vector to spread rabies, and our pets are the first to fall victim to this transmission. The waste of the cats are uncontrolled and spread about in their backyard. Children have been unable to play in the grassy areas with the cat waste, and dogs have gotten extremely ill from ingestion. Cat waste can contain harmful bacteria and parasites, which, which can be transmitted to humans. And just because the cat doesn't look like it's infected, it can very well have parasites. Please assist us in getting control of these feral cats before it becomes a larger issue in the Conshohocken community. It already is a large issue in Philly. Please know that this may not be an issue on your street now, but if this problem is not resolved, you too will soon face these risks if we do not face the facts. Please support an animal ordinance. The final comment is from Dennis Hannan, 448 West Sixth Avenue. Mr. Hannan writes, 410 West Sixth Avenue constantly throws food on the sidewalk. I've witnessed it. And she continues to harass us by waiting until we are walking our dog to throw food on the sidewalk. This needs to be an ordinance. And that concludes the written public comment portion, President Leonard.
Thank you, Brittany. And do we have anyone with us this evening for public comment?
Yes.
Okay, can you state your name and address, please?
Of course. So good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the time. My name is Seth Pajkowski. I am located within Tina's Ward at 335 Spring Mill Avenue. And so similar to the conversation that Stephanie brought up earlier today with regards to the nuisance ordinance, focusing on animal control, specifically the stray cats, for ourselves specifically, since we moved in 13 months ago, we've seen or have dealt with a significant uphill battle with regards to the situation. And so I guess just to give you all a little bit more perspective and take a step back, we moved here 13 months ago and purchased our home purely due to the fact that we see Conshohocken as an opportunity to continue to grow and develop, and that's relevant not only with Sora that's being built today, but in addition to the proposal for 261 to 263 East Elm Street as well. And so as we look at this opportunity, seeing neighbors such as the ones that are adjoining our home or adjacent to ourselves, continuing to feed the cats, leaving food outside that ends up becoming moldy, which in addition allows not only cats but stray animals, in addition to birds that continue to migrate and tend to move towards our area, it continues to enhance or create an additional concern, not only to ourselves, but in addition to the dog that we have in our home as well. Now, that being said, as we've continued to see the stray cat issue, the cats that are located next door to ourselves are both not spayed or neutered. And so because of that, we have actually seen three litters over the past nine months that have continued to increase the population, which is a detriment to Conshohocken specifically. Now, as we look at that litter, which increased from originally three to now upwards of 12, we do continue to see them use our yard as a litter box. And so reflective to what Stephanie mentioned before, we do have cats that use our, you know, yard as a litter box. They feed in that yard, which ends up causing us to now have a dog that one is placed in an unsafe area, but then in addition to that, causes one concern for us, but an additional cost, right? So we, we've had to bring our dog now to about three times. So three separate occasions where we've had to provide antibiotics, and as a result, paid out over $300 in medical bills because of this situation. Now, council, I ask you, why do I need to be responsible and pay out these funds for issues that are occurring on my property due to the negligence of a neighbor or another individual? Uh, to wrap up, the only other piece that I would really add is that in addition to, you know, the continued increased population and some of the one rabies that Katie mentioned and other types of diseases that can be brought forth, um, you know, we, we see this as a cost benefit opportunity. So although cost was mentioned earlier today, you know, in reality, we see this as an opportunity to continue to grow our neighborhood. So with that individual that can help or with the service, the third-party service that we may have included, that will be funds that are allocated to a group that will better Conshohocken and improve or increase the desire to move to this area, which as a result will bring revenue in addition to tax dollars to help to not only fund that area, but other projects and goals in addition to community projects that we'd like to bring to the area as well. Uh, finally, I know that Yanis did mention the topic of roosters, and so to the comment that was made earlier, and I apologize, I believe it was uh, I don't believe she's on the call anymore. Uh, maybe Stacy? I apologize if there wasn't, but across the street, we actually have neighbors that only have roosters. So no benefit whatsoever. They're, they actually crow pretty frequently, and uh, it, it is a continuous issue, especially since, you know, similar to the prior comment that was made um, before myself, the owners don't care, and they, they like to show this pride of having something that does create animosity or tension with other residents, not only on our street, but in the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment.
Of course. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yeah, this is one again with the VFW. Check out, my comment's not about the animals, but while I'm here, I figured I, I should, I should address this. Um, the VFW has been doing, being very successful. We, since we've been having to do outdoor dining, uh, we've had different bands and different activities going out there. Um, we continuously have the same neighbor um, calling the police, and even maybe it's in the middle of the afternoon or 2 o'clock in the afternoon, um, calling the police about the noise. Um, the noise ordinance for Conshohocken is vague at best. It really is a judgment call on the police. Will they or not, it's excessive. Um, I would ask. I would ask council if we could look at building a decibel level, something that, you know, something that I can measure, um, so I know with them, I'm within the guidelines.
Well, we do have a decimal level ordinance.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, I, 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 I have not seen it. I looked for it for a while when I was doing this, uh, last year, but okay, I will, uh, is it after 11:00 PM or is it decibel for 24 hours?
I'm sorry. You're going to have to, I can't really understand you.
I'm sorry. Someone's ringing in the background. I'll research it then. I, maybe I can't find it. I'll, I'll look for it again, um.
Walt, I'm going to jump in here real quick. Um, I know that the chief of police, um, has diligently been working on this topic. Uh, I know that as early as today, this morning, he was in the neighborhood knocking on doors, asking constituents if they had concerns about the music that would be aligned with the one resident that continues to call the police department. The police department has purchased a decibel reader and will be monitoring the VFW to ensure that it is in, um, concerts with the ordinance that currently exists. So I think that to answer your question, um, yes, we are on it. Yes, we are going to address it. We'll work directly with you on it to come to some sort of resolution and conclusion. And you'll be hearing from, from either myself or the chief directly.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Steph, could I just add, uh, it was on my list of things to do to call Walt tomorrow after the things that I've done up to now.
Yes.
So Walt, I promise you, I'll call you tomorrow and we'll talk about all of this. Okay?
And I will vouch for the chief. He was in my office this afternoon and that is exactly what, um, he was out and about today knocking on doors and said that he was going to call you tomorrow. So you got a, a little bit ahead of us, Walt.
I was here. I'll bring it up. Listen, I want to be a business. I want to be good neighbors and, and, you know, we're just trying to provide our, our members with the best energy, you know, best we can. And at the same time, not be, bad neighbors while we're doing it. I appreciate it. Chief, I look forward to your call tomorrow. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Walt. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes, this is Scott Langstein, 200 West Elm Street. Um, just wanted to bring to your, hi. Just wanted to bring your attention, uh, if you haven't been made aware, just about the issue with the traffic flow from Fayette Street onto West Elm Street. There's the two left turn lanes. Um, and when you make that turn from Fayette onto West Elm Street, because of the construction, it narrows back down to one lane pretty much immediately. And so for the unfamiliar drivers and probably even for the familiar drivers, it just comes as a surprise that like, there's really no wiggle room, uh, for that lanes there. And it becomes kind of a little bit of a dangerous jockeying to kind of make sure you're not going to careen into the, uh, car that was in the, the, the secondary left lane, left turning lane.
Right.
And then at the intersection of West Elm and Oak, there's also again, kind of a narrowing lanes and the, uh, the line striping like for a left turn lane and street doesn't line up with where the cars really are going. So I don't know if there's been any traffic incidents there, but I just think it's a, you know, an issue there that, you know, if there's a way that can be addressed, that would certainly be helpful.
Right. Scott, I, I was aware of the, the left turn onto, off of Fayette onto Elm and I was actually down there the other day. And I, I could be wrong and the chief could help me with this, but I believe it's two lanes again, turning onto two lanes. I'm not positive on that. I, I think that that lane closure on Elm is not there now. But that's something that we can look into.
Okay. Yeah. Cause it, I don't know if it's still there or, or it's still, if it's still there or not there. It just seems like it narrows down really quick. So.
It did. You're, you are correct. Yes.
Okay.
And we were aware of it. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there, you're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment? Okay. With that, I will say. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, 226 East Fifth, uh, two things. Um, yeah. First, the, the cat issue is just a complete embarrassment, I, I think to, to Conshohocken. You know, you have people over in your backyard. At least I know in, in this area, there is a constant smell of cat urine. You know, and you, you talk to some of the, the neighbors and some of the residents and some of them have that feeling, well, it's, it's my outdoor cat. At the point, an outdoor cat is a complete outdoor cat, it's, it's, it's public. It's a public cat. I mean, maybe if we can think about for anybody that has their, you know, stray cat, they're not, they're, they're having any of their cats quote unquote, picked up by animal control, either some sort of fining, I think would help curtail some of the behavior. I mean, I don't care if people have animals, love animals myself, love cats and dogs, but we have to have them under control. And, and the second one is, is the optics of, you know, the continuous approval of, um, you know, these one two bedroom apartment units. While on one hand, we're saying we need to reduce traffic on, on Fayette by, you know, looking at things like cutting down to one lane. But on the other hand, you're saying, well, let's, you know, let's take a look at how many more people we can squeeze into Conshohocken. It's a complete, um, contradiction of, of both ideas and the optics on it look very poor. So just something to take into consideration moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Thank you for your comments. Is there any, anyone else have any comments? Okay. Thank you very much for everyone's comments. Thank you, council. And I will say, meeting adjourned. Have a nice evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye. Thank you.
Good night.